Town of Prescott Valley, regular town council meeting, July 8th. Call to order, welcome everyone if you just want to work on finding your seats or stand quietly or whatever you choose to do. At this time I'd like to welcome Pastor Terrell Eldredge, First Southern Baptist Church, down to the front, sir. Welcome. Please stand if you can for the invocation.
Blessed pray. Greetings Father, the Psalmist said, "I will ponder all your work and meditate on your mighty deeds. Your way, O God, is holy; what God is great like our God." Heavenly Father, as we come into your presence in prayer this evening, we're aware that our nation, our state, our city, we're not perfect. And you know that full well, you see us, you know who we are. And so Father, tonight we pray for your salvation, we pray that you would intercede in our, on our behalf, in terms of all of the issues that are going on before us, not because we deserve it, but because of your mighty mercy, that mercy that is unending. So Father, we come pleading for your mercy, for our country, for our state, for our city. We thank you for the opportunity to be a part of the solutions. Father, we pray for this council that is before us this evening, we pray that you would give wisdom to them as they meet, as they deliberate, as they make choices, decisions that affect everyone who lives here. Father, we pray for your blessings on those who serve us. We pray for our police and our firefighters and for our first responders. Father, we pray for protection, we thank you for their selfless service, we thank you for those things that they give that are so intangible and for those that are so very tangible, as they touch our lives. So Father, tonight we pray for your wisdom, we pray for your blessing, we pray for your mercy and all that is done this evening, for we pray these things in Christ's name, amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kinsinger.
Present.
Councilmember Dickinson.
Here.
Councilmember Heppertly.
Here.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Present.
Councilmember Packard.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hunt.
Here.
Mayor Poguda.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you ma'am. We will not be having 5A tonight, we'll be bumping that to the end of the month, and we're just going to jump right into item 6, certificates, staff service award to Marie Yogers, Police Department. Will you please come on down and, as well as a representative from the Police Department?
Thank you for being here for tonight, and I especially want to thank Marie first off. This is Marie's five years with the Town of Prescott Valley, and I just want to read a little bit about Marie and thank her for the five years that she's provided to us. Since Marie joined the records division in 2018, she actually started in 2016 with the Police Department, she's a fantastic employee in person, she's a true blessing to have in records, she's a great team player and consistently professional and courteous. Marie always has a positive attitude and always willing to help, she represents the records division and department very well, she's a true team player and genuinely cares for her coworkers. She's married to Tim Yogers, who is our animal control supervisor, and they are the proud parents of two daughters. The Police Department is very fortunate to have such a hardworking and conscientious employee. And this was all that was written about Marie, so she's very humble, her supervisor wrote great things about her, there's, we could go on for hours about Marie, sitting at the front in records and, you know, helping all the citizens, so we do thank you for that and your positive attitude and the five years that you've dedicated to the Town of Prescott Valley. Thank you, Marie.
Thank you, everybody, I really love working at the PD and everybody there is so great, so I just want to thank everybody I work with and my family who came tonight.
Next up is Shailene from the Police Department as well, come on down, Shailene, also five years.
Get right here now, we're moving it around. Five years for Shailene Alenz as well, we'll call her Shay. She was raised in Yavapai County and graduated from Mayer High School, she's a proud mother of two children, Bella and Aiden, she obtained a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from the University of Phoenix. She was hired by the Prescott Valley Police Department in July of 2016 along with Marie, and attended the Northern Arizona Regional Academy Class Number 41. She subsequently worked two years in patrol and earned a reputation for being a hard worker, a team player, and having an insatiable desire to learn more about her chosen profession. As a patrol officer, she assisted with Prescott Valley's domestic violence unit and sexual response team whenever possible with case follow-up and undercover sting operations. In 2018 December, despite having only two years as a sworn police officer, she was selected for a detective position with the Prescott Valley Police Department Sexual Assault Response Team. She's made a tremendous impact investigating and arresting offenders of sexual assault, internet crimes against children, sex trafficking, solicitation of prostitution, and sexual exploitation of minors. Detective Alenz is active in her community, providing safe dating and social media trainings and bringing awareness to the evils of sexual assaults and sex trafficking. She has spoke to numerous organizations including law enforcement agencies, NARDA recruits, universities, high schools, medical centers, citizens academies, adult protective services, and the Department of Child Safety. She regularly participates in community events such as Coffee with a Cop, National Night Out, Hope Fest, Shop with a Cop, Read Across America, Relay for Life, and Matt Force's Teen Maze. Detective Alenz is a certified forensic interviewer, a chairperson for the Yavapai County Coordinated Community Response Team, a member of the Yavapai County Sexual Assault Response Team, Yavapai County Human Trafficking Task Force, and the Arizona Child Abduction Response Team. She's made a positive impact on her community and the Prescott Valley Police Department. And I know I've read a lot, and you could tell in five years how much work she's actually done and how passionate she is in her career, and we've had her for five years and I can't wait to see how many more adventures and things she can go on in these next 15 to 20 years. So we would like to thank Shay for her continued hard work and many more years to come with the Police Department. So thank you Shay, and we can see how passionate she is about keeping our children and our community safe.
I just want to say thank you to my family and my kids for the patience and support they have with what I do, and to my supervisors for always giving me positive direction and letting me do what I like to do. Thank you.
Next up, Brandon Kelly, five years, Prescott Valley, please.
Officer Brandon Kelly, he's very popular in our streets, as you know, he is one of our hardest workers, is our patrolman, and has gained that reputation, so first off, I do want to appreciate you for that. Officer Kelly began his career in the town 2016 as well, he attended NARDA August 2016. Officer Kelly grew up in Prescott Valley in the early 90s attending Mountain View Elementary until third grade, when he moved to Phoenix, until moving back to Prescott Valley in February of 2016. Officer Kelly started his career at the Adobe Mountain Juvenile Prison in October 2013, where he promoted to sergeant after only one year. Officer Kelly has worked patrol for the majority of his career on swing shift, which is the most active shift, so we do appreciate that. He was awarded the Medal of Valor for his involvement in a critical incident in May of 2017, he was also awarded the Prescott Valley Police Officer of the Year and Elks Lodge Officer of the Year in 2019. Officer Kelly has become a field training officer, general instructor, fitness instructor, and was just recently certified as a member of the Mobile Field Force Team. Officer Kelly works patrol, where he responds to numerous calls for service, and during downtime, he's very active and focusing on getting drugs off the street of Prescott Valley. He currently lives in Prescott Valley with his wife and two kids, and looks forward to the remainder of his career with the Prescott Valley Police Department. With the continued drive and enthusiasm dedicated toward the PD, we'd like to thank Officer Kelly for the five years and the many accomplishments he's already achieved, so Brandon, congratulations, and I know each and every person in here is so thankful for you being out on the street doing what you do. Congratulations.
Sorry, Michael speaking, thank you, thank my family, my wife, she's definitely my heart, I don't know, she supports me every, all the time, especially with the kids, my family, and all my coworkers, supervisors, they all help me and help motivate me whenever, I don't know, the job gets tough, so, thank you.
All right, next up, Scott Stevens, and ladies and gentlemen, this is for 25 years.
I think we've done three five-year awards so far, so they have not quite gotten to Scott's 25 years, so add all them up and they're still not there. So Scott, first off, congratulations, 25 years is an amazing accomplishment for a law enforcement officer, 25 years here is even more amazing, so first off, thank you for that. Lieutenant Scott Stevens began his career in 1982 upon graduating from Bemidji State University in Minnesota with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. He also completed the ROTC program and was commissioned as second lieutenant in the US Army Police Corps, in which he served 10 years. Scott's military training included airborne ranger, basic and advanced commission officer courses, and combined armed services staff school in Fort Leavenworth, Kansas. Scott received an honorable discharge from the Army in 1992, the rank of captain. He then worked for the Town of Elgin, Oklahoma for three years, where he served as the chief of police. Scott was hired by the Prescott Valley Police Department in 1996. He attended the Northern Arizona Regional Academy Class Number One, I think we said earlier somewhere in 41 and 42, which is a great accomplishment, Scott. Scott worked for three years in the field services as part of the department's first community policing bike patrol team. He then promoted to sergeant and worked supervisory assignments in patrol, professional standards and training, emergency operations and disaster plans, bicycle unit, and public information officer. Scott promoted lieutenant in April of 2015 and served at the Field Services Division from 2015 to 2018. He then served as the Criminal Investigations Lieutenant from 2018 to 2020, and is currently the Support Services Division Lieutenant. Scott earned a postgraduate degree in Criminal Justice Administration from Oklahoma City University. He completed the Arizona Leadership and Policing Organization Class Number 10, he's taken advanced national incident management systems courses, completed advanced police cyclist certification, and is a graduate of the Dale Carnegie Public Speaking and Human Relations Course. In 2019, Scott was named the Prescott Valley Chamber of Commerce Citizen of the Year. That same year, he also received the Veterans of Foreign Wars National Law Enforcement Order for Dedicated and Selfless Service to the Town of Prescott Valley and the Police Department. Scott lives in Prescott Valley with his wife Misty and his six children, where we know Scott's very busy. So Scott, congratulations, and I don't think we can thank you enough, I've read all this stuff, but 25 years, especially with one agency, is a huge accomplishment, so we're all very thankful for the commitment that you've had towards the town. Thank you, Scott.
Scott, we're so fortunate to have you as part of our team. First time I met you was at the Prescott Valley Police Citizens Academy, and you have taught so many citizens how much you, what you do here in our community and what, how important the police are to us, and you've become family, and we're so very, very grateful for everything you've done, and we wish you the very, very best and God's blessings on you for the future.
Scott, thank you so much for your dedication to the town and to the people of the town, we really appreciate you and everything that you have done and are still doing, and we appreciate your family and their support, and then also your dedication to them as a family man as well, so thank you.
Lieutenant, thank you so much for everything you do, one thing that I, I'm not for sure the chief mentioned, but you do our disaster preparedness, and even though we don't use it very often, hopefully, we're in safe hands with you and your planning, so I appreciate that. I know you're a man of God, and I appreciate that as well, and that you're raising your family that way, and so I thank you for raising young citizens here for us and making this area a better place.
Hey Lieutenant, well, thank you for your service, and thank you for your service, military and police. We are so blessed to have you here, you, I just hope you hang on, maybe not 25 years, but five more would be kind of cool. Thank you very much, Scott, it's nice knowing you, still knowing you, keep up the good work.
And this is a plug for Coffee with a Cop as well, because that's where most people can get to know our officers as the people that they are as well, and I love their sense of humor. When we had the opening for Dunkin' Donuts, I do remember a little YouTube presentation you all did, it was awesome, and so it's great to get to know the officers as people and that they are family, guided by having the family behind them, and so thank you all, I met your mother this evening, she's such a lovely person, and you really have to behave, don't you? So, we just really truly appreciate all your hard work and look forward to still working with you in the future, thank you.
Congratulations, Scott, this is a great honor to have tonight, I'm sitting out here just looking at your wife and the three boys that are, got the shirts on, got the ties on, and you've got them all spiffed up, you probably ran them through a little inspection before you brought them up here tonight, but I'm looking at her, and it's very seldom do you get to see three boys dressed up with ties and everything, so that goes hats off to you. Congratulations on 25 years, I know it's been tough at times, but you've gone through the thick and the thin, and I wish you the best, and how many, doesn't matter how many more years you got, but wish you the best and have a safe career and looking to working with you more in the future, thank you again.
And those three boys have a sister too, right on the end, and she's all gorgeous too, two sisters, so awesome, very, ah, awesome, so thank you for that.
Scott, I'm gonna, I just want to thank you first for doing what you do for the Town of Prescott Valley, and I'm gonna tell a story, and I'm confident you don't remember this, but, but I do, and it's kind of hard to believe, but my rookie year, Scott and I were on the same squad, and we were one night sitting up at a Castle Golf parking lot, and I remember asking Scott, hey, how long, how long do you see yourself being a police officer? I know you don't remember this, and you said, I don't know, probably about 30 years. And I thought, man, that's a long time, and what I said to you while we're, during this conversation, you're like, you know Kel, I just love being a police officer, I love helping out, and I, just being as a rookie officer hearing that from you, and then now look at you, 25 years here at Prescott Valley, it's huge, and it's a huge accomplishment, and props go out to your family, and I want to bring the two most important women in your life, right now, your wife and your mom, bring them down, because I love hearing from your mom, so let's, let's have her come down for a minute, so, we're all in for a treat when she gets to come here, so. Come on down ma'am, yes. So when Scott received his award from the chamber, Scott was on a cruise, correct? And your mom accepted the award, and she dazzled us all in the crowd talking about how great her son is, and I'm gonna give her this opportunity right now to say a few words about, about her son, so. Ma'am, this is all yours, you get to say something about Scott.
When Scott was a little boy, he was a Cub Scout, and he was a Boy Scout, and, boy, he got into everything he could do to help people and work with people, and he behaved himself pretty well, because I kept a sharp eye on him. He went, when he finished college, then he went on into the military, and we were very proud of him. I hope he keeps behaving himself, he's got a good wife, and he's got a lot of little ones to keep an eye on too. So, thank you for letting me say a little bit about him, he's getting bald.
Thank you for everyone here tonight, I am blessed to be married to such an amazing man, it's been quite the adventure from the moment we met, we actually met when a house exploded here in Prescott Valley, so it's never a dull moment since, we've, I've had the pleasure of working alongside him and getting the privilege of being his wife and the mother of his children, and I couldn't ask for a better husband, and we are so proud of him.
Y'all are just too kind, too kind. I have a lot of things to say, my mom, she was an English teacher, she taught for 50-some years, and I think my squad over the year, over the years, were very upset with me, because I had a very, and even today, I know the Crime Prevention Unit, they're, they're kind of miffed with me, because I kicked back a lot of media releases and a lot of reports, and I haven't made a lot of points with them, but that's, I owe it all to my mom, so you can talk to her. The one common denominator that you've heard tonight so far is family, and I can't be prouder of my family. It's, it's just unbelievable how you can go through 25 years without that support, without the love, and I'm just very grateful. And not only my biological and my, my family here, but, you know, the town, you know, the people of this town are amazing. I look around and a lot of you are here that have been over 25 years, and it's just incredible. People I work for and with, thank you, I mean, you know, it's just, you can't do this job on your own, and it's thanks to your support and help, I appreciate you very much. And then there's the, the family of faith, the people who pray for me, for this department, Jerry being our chaplain, and members on the council, I appreciate so much your prayers. Without the grace of God, you know, the pastor prayed that, he told us that, you know, we're not perfect, you know, we need mercy and grace, and I'm very thankful for that, so thank you. Ladies and gentlemen. we'll start on this end this week, Counselwoman.
Good evening, everyone, thank you so much for being here with us this evening and to celebrate. I have a couple of things to share with you. This last month, the state legislature passed the state budget, and included in that was something that we've been wanting and needing for a while, and our state legislature, state legislator, Kwan Nguyen, for LD1, he was able to get $4.7 million to repave Highway 69 from Stone Ridge to Truwood here in Prescott Valley, and we're so very grateful for that, and we want to acknowledge him for that. Couple of things are going on, the Prescott Valley Public Library is offering a new dial story that several of us are participating in, and this is something that will be available for your, for the little ones, they simply call the free storyline phone number at 928-910-7772, and follow the prompts, and there'll be a variety of stories that they can listen to before going to bed at night or to calm them down during the day. Another item I wanted to mention was, there's been a lot of things going on in our community this last month, and one of them is the Yavapai College Performing Arts Center has been doing concerts on the green, and on July 3rd, they presented Prescott Pop Symphony in American Celebration, everyone brought chairs and their sodas and drinks, and, and after a very nice rain shower, we enjoyed the beautiful sky and coolness of the evening, and it was a wonderful evening. They have a number of concerts lined up, the next one will be with John Denver, so to see what is on schedule for the next performance, you can go to YCPAC.com. Another item that is coming up here real soon is the Yavapai County Fandomania, Saturday, August 14th, from 10 to 4 p.m. at the Finley Toyota Center, they're looking for volunteers to assist them, and now's the time to start working on your costume as well, and for more information on that, you can go to the Prescott Valley Library website, pvplibrary.com. And the last item is that I'm going to be participating in a hike with the Happy Trails Hiking Club, Wednesday, July 14th at 8 a.m. at the Mountain Valley Park in Prescott Valley, and I'm inviting all of the public to join us that day, and it will be, we'll have a guide from the Happy Trails Hiking Club. Thank you.
Counselwoman. Vice Mayor.
I just want to say that Dean and I went to the event for Polaris, which is, used to be West Yavapai Guidance Center here on Windsong, and they've rebranded, and I don't know what we'd do without them in this community, because they help a lot of people. Just a reminder that I have office hours on Tuesday from 10 to noon, and you can reach me at lhun@pvaz.net. And finally, regarding storytime, we're gonna be reading to littles right out here at the stage on July 28th at 5:30, so it's fun for young and old alike. So it's fun for young and old alike.
Councilman? All right, moving on. Item eight, consent agenda. All matters listed under consent agenda are considered routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Council, you've all had a chance to review your packet. If there's no item you wish to remove at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda by electronic vote.
Have a second?
Second?
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to nine A, Town Manager Appointment, Consideration and Possible Action. Mr. Legler, are you taking this?
No, actually, our acting, acting.
Yes, ma'am. You're up.
I wasn't prepared for that. Counsel, we have a town manager appointment tonight. Gilbert, come on up. How's that?
Is that, is that it? That's everything?
Vote on it, yes or no?
Well, we, we will add to that just, you know, because, uh, the words are hovering above, we need to add them. But, uh, we do have two actions essentially. We're appointing a new town manager and then we're entering into a contractual agreement with that manager. And as you know, our prior manager had been with us since two thousand and four. And of course, he'd been with the town since nineteen eighty-nine. So there are some big, uh, shoes to fill and we're looking forward to that, uh, being filled. I didn't participate in the actual activities. You know, Stephen did that and did a great job. I'm always glad to give Stephen the opportunity to, uh, let somebody know that, uh, you know, don't mess with us when it comes to a contract, you know, Stephen is. So we'd like to, uh, first of all, have you do the vote of, uh, well, it's going to be one vote altogether, appointment and then approval of the contract. And then you can have the manager speak to you afterwards.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Gilbert Davison as town manager and approve the related town manager agreement by electronic vote.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
All right. Can, uh, we have Mr. Gilbert Davison come on down, say a few words. Welcome, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of the, of the council, staff and, uh, members of the Prescott Valley community, it's an absolute honor to be joining this incredible team, uh, and to be moving into, to this great community and just very excited to work with all of you as the elected officials, to work with the, the staff. I want to recognize and I know how hard it is being the acting, acting. But also a shout out to the acting town manager, uh, Ryan Judy, for the work that, that he has done as well. And to the whole staff team, I'm just absolutely looking forward to, to being a part of, uh, the effort to give service ultimately to the community, uh, which is why the, the whole local government exists. And so, uh, looking forward to it and I thank you very much, uh, for your, uh, uh, recognition of, of hopefully what I'm going to bring to you and, uh, it's going to be a great partnership. Thank you.
Guess we're going to make it official right now, so you're up, sir. You're just going to have to trust Ivan on this so we didn't, we didn't bamboozle you, so, right there.
Fatima? Fatima, did you check his driver's license?
While the mayor's coming back, Gilbert starts August ninth, which is a Monday.
There's no backing out now, sir. You're in it right now. All right, moving on. Item nine B, new series twelve liquor license for Rosa's Pizzeria. This is a public hearing. I'm going to open it up right this time. Ms. Caitlin?
All right, so this is an application for a series twelve liquor license for Rosa's Pizzeria. It's going to be located at twenty-nine ninety-two Park Avenue, which is where the old Garcia's used to be in the entertainment district. We posted a public hearing notice at the location from June eighth to the twenty-ninth and we didn't receive any comments pro or con approval. And, um, unfortunately, owner Skylar Reeves wasn't able to make it out tonight, but he did write a little something for me to share. He said, "We here at Rosa's are very excited to be coming to Prescott Valley and Rosa's has been a fixture in downtown Prescott for over ten years and we are looking forward to starting the next decade of Rosa's legacy in Prescott Valley." "We know everyone is chomping at the bit to know when we will be open and while we are eager to be open, we want to make sure we're totally dialed in." Um, "He invited the public to visit rosespizzeria.com for updates. Find them on Facebook at Rosa's Pizzeria or on Instagram at Rosa's Pizzeria Prescott."
I did speak to Skylar earlier in the week and he, uh, was trying everything he could to be here this evening and he, he definitely regrets being in front of us, but just wanted to say how excited he is about Prescott Valley. So, um, we'll welcome him like we do all businesses. And for those of you that have not been to Rosa's in Prescott, you're missing out. So it's exciting to have it here in Prescott Valley. So is there anyone else out in the audience that would like to say anything in regards to this liquor license? If not, I will close the public hearing. Moving on to item nine C, recommendation of a new series twelve liquor license for Rosa's Pizzeria.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to, uh, recommend approval of a new series twelve liquor license for Rosa's Pizzeria by electronic vote.
Can I second?
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thanks, ma'am. Item nine D, Prescott Valley General Plan, twenty-twenty-five update, GPA twenty-one, all right, GPA twenty-one dash zero zero one. Sir, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, um, as you stated, this is, uh, the general plan amendment, uh, twenty-one dash zero zero one. So every ten years by state law, we are to update, uh, the town's general plan. Under your packets, there was a reference between ten to twenty years. That's actually incorrect. It's every ten years. Um, that is statutory, um, as part of the overall process. The general plan twenty-twenty-five, as we all know, was ratified with voters in March two thousand and thirteen. Um, the approval of the public participation plan is kind of the first iteration into this, uh, this project. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the public participation plan to the council, um, on June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Um, the proposed twenty-three-five general plan would include the following elements as you see there. One of the items, uh, that might be a new addition, um, I know there's been some discussion about an education, a potential education element. In the past, when I've done these, um, in most communities, I've included them as a portion of the economic development, uh, element. Typically, when you look at education, you look at economic development, how you're promoting the community and how you're promoting people to move to the community as well as employers and so forth. So that's one of the items that will kind of come through this process. Um, as of now, that's, that's kind of one of the things that we're, we're thinking about internally. If there's direction from council to do something different, then definitely we will make those changes as necessary. But in the past, I've, I've seen them where that works out fairly well. Um, again, state law requires municipalities to update the general plan, um, every ten years and the approval of the public participation plan is that first step. So a real general outline of what we're looking at with activities and so forth on the general plan update is as follows. Um, so today is the potential adoption of resolution twenty-one ninety-four, um, which would adopt the public participation plan. Um, we'll start the staff review and update the chapter period, um, starting in July and going through September. We're looking at a compliment, um, a compilation of the amended plan, um, in September and then start going through the overall public process. During these times, we will also be looking at working with the other departments on the specific elements of the general plan, whether they're transportation, circulation, economic development, so forth, water resources. The, uh, the review and refresh element, we're looking at taking through the Planning and Zoning Commission on a couple of different dates, um, as well as bringing those in front of them for potential, uh, recommendation. Final modifications we're looking at making in December. Um, we have a sixty-day agency review. The sixty-day agency review is statutorily set up as well, where we send it out to the neighboring agencies, the state, as well as state land department and so forth. Then we're looking at possible outreach meetings in January to February with, with public. Now, that's not to say that when we're going through these, there's going to be public hearings and so forth on the different elements. We'll be, we'll be conducting those through the Planning and Zoning Commission. They'll be advertised as such and the, the public will have an ability to comment on those. We'll also be looking at setting up, um, a specific page, um, or a section of our page under the community development website, um, on the, on our current website to then gain public participation as well. Ideally, we're looking at Planning and Zoning Commission for hearing number one on March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, potential Planning and Zoning Commission hearing number two, which would be a recommendation to council on April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two. With those two specific meetings, by statute, you're to have those in two separate areas. So one, one of those meetings will be here at City Hall. One of them is going to be, uh, an area to be determined at this point. Uh, town council, potential adoption, public hearing and action on June twenty-third. And then we have a hundred and twenty-day deadline to get it on the ballot. Um, with the size of our community, we are required to take this in to the, to the vote of the, of the, uh, citizens. And we're looking at a possible election date of the general election in November eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. It's a fairly aggressive schedule. However, we are, um, confident that we can make these dates happen. Ultimately, what we're looking at specifically is updating based on the census numbers, making general updates to certain sections, working with the, uh, different department heads on what they need to be updated in their specific areas. Um, one item of note is, you know, we have a, uh, Parks and Open Space Master Plan that's, um, in the process or has been adopted. We're looking at implementing that into the general plan. We've had conversations specifically with Public Works on updating some of the circulation element. We have some changes we need to make there, uh, as well as if we will be working with water resource management and so forth on those elements and working with our economic development coordinator on any items he would like to see in that section. So this will be a pretty large effort. It will involve multiple departments. Community Development is looking to spearhead this. Uh, with that said, that kind of ends my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions, um, of the council at this point.
I just have a, a comment. I believe, uh, I believe the education element should be totally separate. I know, uh, Scottsdale, if you want to revert back to what they're doing, they're doing some amazing things down there and they actually have an education section in their general plan. I think it's something we can certainly model off of and utilize our partnerships that we have here and, and create that, that symbiotic relationship that, um, just makes our community so much better. So if we could somehow manage that, that would be a terrific asset.
Mayor, definitely will.
I just want to introduce Eric Fitzer. He is actually our interim community development director and he's done several of these plans in a previous life, so he's very qualified to work on this amendment. I am requesting, if possible, that we do a small area transportation plan for the circulation element since transportation and future transportation is very important to our residents and our community. So I'm asking that at least that portion of this, of this general plan, that element, go out for review and there is some funding available. So, um, that's my two cents. And then you had another element to look at, right?
Yeah, I just, I'm not sure if I, I missed it or, or what, if we can work some sort of public safety element by working with CAFMA and our, our police department and just see what the future looks like there, whether it's future placement of, of different fire stations or what that kind of roughly looks like, uh, in the next ten years.
Mayor, council, um, in other communities, we've had public safety elements included in that.
Has our twenty-twenty-five had that? It wasn't in our last one, is it?
I don't believe it was.
I think I just, okay.
Plan to use circulation, open space, growth area, environmental, water resources, housing, economic development.
So we can get a public safety, just a, a section in there?
Mayor, I guess we can.
Awesome. That would be terrific. That's all I had. Anyone else?
I just want to say thank you to you and all of your team that are doing such a great job. Thank you for that.
Thank you, sir. And if that's all we have, then, uh, are we looking for a, a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I motion to authorize the mayor, or in his absence, the vice mayor, to sign resolution number two-one-nine-four approving the public participation plan for updating general plan twenty-twenty-five parenthesis GPA twenty-one hyphen zero zero one parenthesis by electronic vote.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to item nine E, American Legion Park Play Structure Purchase, CIP number P four nine nine. Is that our interim, interim handling this one?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, thank you. Um, we are planning on purchasing a new play structure at the American Legion Park. Uh, what's significant about this, as per council's direction at our retreat, uh, you had requested more shade structure. Um, Triple, uh, Triple M Recreation has, uh, developed a great playground, which is red, white and blue, which coincides with the American Legion theme, and a nice shade structure over that park. American Legion Playground right now is over ten years old and it is, uh, much-needed updated playground in that area. We have a lot of new families, young families moving into that area. So this will be a heavily-used park. Um, so getting that, uh, playground updated, uh, would be awesome. So we are wanting to move forward and purchase a play structure, uh, through Triple M Recreation.
Mayor, I first want to just compliment you on listening to the, the wants and needs of council when it came to the shading. I think that's so important. And for those of you that are not familiar where George Anderson Park is, it's almost literally in the center of town. And, um, I'm always happy when we are improving our core of Prescott Valley. And, uh, I know the citizens around there are definitely going to be benefiting it, using it. It's right across the street from, uh, Yavapai Casa for Kids, as well as right next to Engine Fifty-Three, the fire department. So, uh, it's most definitely going to be, uh, used a lot. So appreciate that, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, I, uh, I want to welcome Ms. Van Heren in that seat. And I also want to give a shout out to Supervisor Mary Mallory because she worked really hard on this park. She started a Parks and Rec Foundation, which we're, we got that engine running to, uh, raise more funds for our Parks and Rec and art. And I just want to thank you for her, uh, vision of that park. And I'm glad that it's going to be red, white and blue. And like the mayor said, there's a lot of social service programs in that area. And so this is a quality of life investment that this council's making tonight. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign resolution number twenty-one ninety-four approving the pub, oops, I'm reading the wrong line. Go for it.
I would like to make a motion to approve purchase of a play structure at American Legion Park through Triple M Recreation in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars and forty-one cents by electronic vote.
Second?
Clerk, please call the vote.
Sure glad that pastor said we all make mistakes, right?
That passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item nine F, George Anderson Park Ramada Shade Structure.
Yes, and again, um, what's really great about George Anderson Park, I, I really, really like this park, is getting a shade structure out there, uh, which will really finish off that park. We have one more element that we're going to put in is a concrete basketball pad out there, which is needed. It's just asphalt that's so old. So it's so old. So, uh, getting a nice, uh, proposed, uh, we want to propose Ramada, Ramada Shade. It's a twenty-twenty Mesa-style. So it looks, just to give you a comparison, it looks like the one at the Santa Fe Station Park, but ha- half that size. So it'll be a nice, uh, area for picnic table where people can rent out that, uh, shade structure and have a nice picnic and, and enjoy that park with their family. So I am asking that the council approve the purchase of this Ramada Shade and George Anderson Park through Exor Play Incorporated.
And that playground equipment was actually updated about two and a half years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
So this is going to kind of complete it.
Mm-hmm, yep.
So.
And with that, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion
Absolutely.
to approve the purchase of a Ramada Shade Structure for George Anderson Park through Exor Play Incorporated in the amount of forty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety cents by electronic vote.
Second?
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Item nine G, Grant Award Arizona Community Foundation of Yavapai County, Janet Cottinglaw. Sir, I believe this is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This was a grant that the police department had put in for in March of this year, and we exceed reception, or acceptance on January ninth. It's the Arizona Community Foundation award in the amount of three thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents. What this goes towards is our police canine unit and their medical expenses, insurance, and things like that. As you know, we have four active police canines that are, like I said, very active in our community with drug interdiction, taking off illegal drugs off the streets, cadaver searching, fugitive apprehension, and a multitude of other things. Also, community events as well, they like to go into the schools, especially the elementary schools, they love the kids, it's a great community outreach. Our dogs are, are wonderful around the public, in some ways good, in some ways not good for others. But, this grant is to assist them with medical care and insurance for the duration of the dog's service, and possibly beyond that as well. So, this was three thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents that was awarded to the police department on behalf of the Arizona Community Foundation of Yabapai County.
All right, that's pretty clear. Council, you have any questions?
I have a quick question, Jeremy. Do we have pet insurance now?
Yes, we do, ma'am.
Okay.
And we usually put in for this grant each year, and supplement it additionally with other funds as well. So, we've gotten this grant in the past where we've used these funds for this. Yes, ma'am.
Perfect, perfect, thank you.
With that being said-
May I make a motion, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
A motion to accept a law enforcement, excuse me, canine fund grant and enter into the required agreement by electronic vote.
I second.
And hopefully with treats.
Clerk, please call the vote.
Let pass this unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on, item nine H, intergovernmental agreement with Yabapai County Antelope Meadows Free Flow Right. Mr. Davis, it's all yours.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council. The item you have before you is an intergovernmental agreement with Yabapai County to fund the Antelope Meadows Free Flow Right project. The exhibit you have before you is an example of what a free flow right looks like, and staff, typically every year, we like to partner with area agencies when we can partner on funding, when we feel like there's a mutual benefit. To explain a little bit why we felt like it's mutual benefit, to the north is quite a bit unincorporated area of Yabapai County, the Antelope Meadows area. So, with this free flow right, it'll help traffic mobility, so we look for funding source, and I know Supervisor Mallory is here, and she's very instrumental, and every year we tend to partner with a project. Last year was Sunset Lane, to the tune of millions of dollars. This year, it's a three-hundred thousand dollar turn lane, and the county is willing to contribute seventy-five thousand towards this particular project. So, actually, it lands in Prescott Valley, but lots of use up the north, and I'll talk about the construction of this later, but what this is, is the instrument that puts the funding into place, so we can build the county for their proportionate share that they've offered. And I do understand the board of supervisors approved this yesterday at their meeting, and with your approval tonight, that sets the funding in place for the construction, and I'll talk about the next item.
For those of you that haven't seen one of these, we have it, just recently had one on Glassford Hill coming off of eighty-nine A, and it dramatically has increased, or improved, the, the transition from one road to another without having to stop or, or observe any other cross traffic. So, I know the residents of Pronghorn Ranch and Antelope Meadows are, are looking forward to this.
Actually, the genesis of that, Mayor, was, we did hear from the residents that, you know, that's significant through traffic goes through too, and with additional lane, you can see that traffic once it goes straight, because there's been some incidents, close calls, so to speak, where people were turning right, and the car right behind them wasn't, and people pulled in front of them with the turning car, if I make sense there. So, this would be a good, add a much better mobility in that area, and, you know, answer the request of those residents in that area.
Absolutely. Can we get a motion on this one?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement with Yabapai County for the construction of the Antelope Meadows Free Flow Right Road Project in the amount of seventy-five thousand by electronic vote.
Second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
Let pass this unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Davis, you're up again with construction contract award, Antelope Meadows Free Flow Right, and the Parkview Drive Connector Project.
Yeah, Mayor, this may be not typical what Public Works may present. Typically, we award projects individually, but this particular project, both of these projects, we talked about the Free Flow Right, in addition to Parkview, I'll go over some exhibits too, but both of them small in the Public Works game, a few hundred thousand dollars, but we feel like we get some economy of scale when we bid them together. So, very separate projects, very separate funding sources, I'll go over, but we are going to bid them as one, so you get some economy of scale. So, I'll go over each, each, each one of those. Here's an example, this particular sign, as I mentioned in the last item, the resident has been asking for this Free Flow Right. Here's actually looking where that Free Flow Right will be, as you're looking southbound, the addition. What we do like to do is add to the residents, this has been up about six weeks, let them know we're coming. We've heard very good comments, I have, in addition to staff, that, boy, this is a nice improvement that's going to come through. So, we'd like to get the project sign up. In addition, we'd like to call out the attention with the county logo there, that here's your funding source, and here's a partnership, so we get a lot of mileage out of that, and let residents know what, what we're doing. So, the project sign's been up to notify residents. Of course, I think we've looked at this, I think I've covered this, once again, the logo there for Yabapai County participation with us in the funding, and talked about the mobility there. Next thing that I do want to come out, talk about with the contribution from the county, this is really a growth-related issue with the subdivision growth in the area, so as Prescott Valley, we've always had growth pays for growth. What you're seeing up here is a development impact fee draft report, it's actually been finalized, but hasn't particularly gone, been to the public review, I understand, but Ryan Judy asked the market draft, but you can see in the schedule there that this Free Flow Right is going to be actually funded by the impact fees paid from new housing. This is a growth-related project only, we probably wouldn't need this Free Flow Right, but as we like to point out, it's the new residents that move here, or the existing residents, growth pays for growth, so here's an example of the funding source. You may know it up there too, items number one and two, the Pronghorn Ranch Parkway intersection, that just got done here in the last few weeks. Once again, growth-related development impact fees, and you can see the Glassford Hill Spouse traffic signal, we just cut a ribbon on that last Thursday. So, good example of, these are all expansion projects, the funding source is development impact fees. So, I do understand we have water and wastewater development impact fees to still do, and so they'll come out concurrently. So, this is in place, just isn't a hundred percent final, but definitely we're using it as guidance to fund projects and continue to move forward with impact, growth impact type projects. Here's a good example of what we end out to the HOA, especially the Pronghorn Ranch Home Ode Association, just to give them advanced notice, as always, we're likely to let people know what they expect, and as always, where staff's available to answer any questions in addition to the timeline, and we're excited to say, well, with council award, we will move forward with this project here in the next couple of weeks, and fully anticipate it being done by September, and putting this improvement in place. Moving on to the second project that was bid concurrently, this one has been talked about for a long time. This is the connection of the Parkview Drive between the Pronghorn subdivision we just talked about and the Viewpoint Drive. This has been, I guess, talked a lot about in the past by residents, how come the connection hasn't been made, but there's been a good reason that due to all the construction, we really wanted to make sure each individual construction traffic used the main routes through. So, we didn't want, you know, viewpoint typically can be a main route, we didn't want people, the construction traffic cutting over, over to the Pronghorn subdivision, very deliberately. And keep in mind, with growth pays for growth, typically this would be built by the Viewpoint subdivision as part of the growth. Well, they've kind of stalled out, that's their choice, on continued development, but Pronghorn has continued to grow, it's almost built out. So, with council's direction, we can go ahead and make this connection. Council may recall too, this connection's always been in place, it's an emergency access, it's got a chain on each side. In fact, when we had a fire here a year or two ago, a couple of years ago, there was some concern about, hey, how do you get between subdivisions? Well, always been in place, and we did have the chain down, in fact, Public Works staff was there to help direct traffic, didn't need it, but the fire was of great concern, but as always, this connectivity and access will be very vital to, you know, emergency access too. Did want to make that particular comment, we did hear from the school district already, they're really looking forward to this connection being complete, because that'll help with some of their bus trips, and you can see, this cuts off about, oh, about three miles of route, if you're up in one north and want to go the other ones, so it'll be well received. And conversely, I've already received the converse comment, that some people aren't as happy with this connection, and I say, well, it's, I think there's going to be more good than not, just, not all residents feel like that's, you know, should allow traffic, but there's public roads, and we'll make that connection. Likewise, we'll, just before construction, this one we will mail to individual homes in the area, about a hundred and seventy-five notices will go out to the adjacent people, let them know what to expect in the construction timeline, and we did want to move this project sooner, because we're going to put a double chip, it's more of a temporary lifecycle roadway until the development community can build it up, so we don't want to spend any more money, and we have to, when it's really development community's responsibility. But, the big takeaway from this is obviously the connection, this will be the alternative to Pronghorn Ranch Parkway, as we continue to build automobile in the area, and that's the highlights of each individual project. Did like to show with the new budget year, we hit the ground running as first as we can, you can see each of these projects, in addition, all the projects Public Works will move forward with, and I do like to show all the funding sources, this has been recently updated on the Public Works website with the new budget effective July first. As you can see in the lower right-hand corner, Antelope Meadows Free Flow Right, as you can see, development impact fee funding source, and of course, the Parkview Connector is funded with HERF. So, the rest of these projects, we look forward to bringing to you throughout the budget year, but always like to make a plug for the funding source for each particular project. So, with that, we did take bids from local contractors, I think council's well aware of the construction market we have now. I was very happy we got three of the local contractors to bid, and you can see the bids there are very close, so we know that's what it is in this environment. As you, council may also note, that the particular Antelope Meadows Free Flow Right was more than the engineering estimate we did a year ago. Well, if you look, I understand wood's gone up about thirty percent, same two-by-four, well, likewise, labor, all the like, so you can see it's gone up about thirty percent. So, this is what the market currently bears, I'm happy we have contractors going to work with this, and we're willing to compete, this is what it is in current market. So, you'll see that we do recommend, in exchange of money within budget of HERF funding, to pay for the balance that wasn't budgeted for the Antelope Meadows Free Flow Right. So, we do anticipate that we will move forward to Florentine improvements, but since that goes over two budget years, as currently planned to start in the spring, we can reappropriate some more HERF funding and make sure the projects will hold. But, staff's recommendation is to move forward with the project and funding it, so we can get these two projects put into place. So, Earth Resource, a local contractor, was the low at four-hundred-and-forty-two thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars. As I mentioned, there is a bid schedule AMB, separate projects and funding sources, but the contract was very clear, we only award on, both of them added up, and they were actually lower than copper state paving. That's all my comments, and we will move forward with construction period services usual with Davin Associates who did the design, and they'll make sure it gets built in accordance with the plans and specs, and we look forward to moving forward this upon council award.
Norm, I just want to say that I have a, had a lot of people comment about the viewpoint, just connecting through on Parkview, and they are by far, the, the positive comments outweigh the negatives, probably, I don't know, twenty to one on, on my Facebook page. So, a lot of the citizens, and I'm sure council's heard this, that live up there have been talking about this, and, and truly are looking forward to this, so I think that's huge. And I'm going to be honest with you on, when I knew we were taking money from Florentine, you know how, you know how passionate I am about Florentine, we've had numerous conversations about it, but I understand what you're doing and shuffling it around, and that's, you know, totally acceptable in this, in this situation, at least in my opinion, that these two projects definitely need to be moving ahead, so I appreciate your work on that. Vice Mayor?
So, I want to give some kudos to the mayor, because ever since that fire, he's been working on this connector, and we're finally getting it done, and the squeaky wheel gets the oil, so thank you.
Vice Mayor, if I could comment, I hear that comment a lot from the public, and I said, you know, a lot of people weren't aware that the real access route, that fire, came from the west, moving east. Well, you've always had Pronghorn Ranch, Antelope Meadows Drive goes out to Coyote Springs, and a lot of people, I guess, didn't notice that, and I said, yeah, that's in place today, was always in place. So, with the fire moving that way, you didn't have to go up Viewpoint Drive, so you always had the Pronghorn Ranch Parkway, so we had plenty of access. So, I like to point that out, you know, it's always, safety and mobility is important, but as I mentioned, this access that we're going to improve to a pavement standard, the emergency chain gates were down, and there was two routes of access that could have gotten into the east, hit, you know, Antelope Meadows that goes to Coyote Springs Road to eighty-nine A. So, we're always safe. But, it's a good point, we always need to be mindful of good access during emergencies.
And, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank Norm for his relationships over the last twenty-some years in this community, where he can pick up the phone and call three qualified bidders to bid on the project, and to also thank Earth Resources, who we just met this afternoon when we opened Coyote Springs Safety Improvements. And I want to point out to the chief that when this road gets built, we're going to have to be doing some positive education out there, so the big trucks that aren't using it now, don't get lazy and try to use it then. And also to YCCA, and I'm sure she's listening, if she could help us get the word out to contractors that this is for residents and not for the big construction trucks. So, thank you, Norm, for a great PowerPoint.
Thank you.
Council, anything else for Mr. Davis?
So, I'll make a motion, if that's okay, to award bid to the lowest responsible bidder and enter into construction contract with Earth Resources Corporation in the amount of two-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand, two-oh-four for Antelope Meadows Free Flow Right Project, and a hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty-four for Parkview Drive Connector Project, and approve amendment to town engineer agreement with Davin Associates in total amount of fifty-five thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty for construction period services by electronic vote.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
Let pass this unanimously, Mayor.
Thanks, ma'am. Item nine J, amendment to the town engineer agreement, Davin Associates, design Viewpoint Drive improvements, Spouse to Manly.
Viewpoint Drive improvements, as council, Mayor and council is well aware, we opened up the one-mile section across the state land section here in March, it's been wildly popular with that new corridor being opened up. I do like to remind council, that was a seven-and-a-half million dollar improvement, it took us many years to save up for that, we generate about two million dollars a year in our one-third cent sales tax, which funds this particular corridor. So, it's always fun for me to show this current project where this particular improvement's going to be. We talked about the Viewpoint Connector, and will for a good number of years, because we've built the connectivity between the roadways, and now we build the capacity improvements, and also some of the existing roads with increased traffic, we have to go back and redo some of the pavement structure to a better design standard for truck traffic, and just more vehicles per day. Keep in mind, Viewpoint Drive between Long Look, as you see in the exhibit, between Long Look and Manly was really just a neighborhood street. Like all our neighborhood streets, we don't spend a lot of money, as much money, so to speak, on the asphalt pavement in the base, because you don't need it. Well, now with this being an arterial collector and growing with trip demand, the engineering has to be put into pavement, in addition to some of the geometrics and the like. So, what I am showing you up in here, was this little section in between was about eleven-hundred feet, as you can see in the exhibit here, we've updated the exhibit to show the one-mile section across the state land section opened up this, this past March. In addition to, I like to point out, the long-term planning we've done on this corridor, in addition to the stormwater management with the big floodplain through there, but in addition to the roadways. You can see the channel improvements adjacent to this current roadway improvement from two lanes to four lanes. We actually did that, as you can see, started in two thousand and sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. So, we've been five years ago, built the adjacent stormwater channel with flood control dollars. Now, we're using a one-third cent roadway dollars in order to build the adjacent roads. So, that's this particular section that you see, it's about eleven-hundred feet, and we have a staff estimate of one-point-eight million for this improvement. We really kind of emptied out the bucket of, let me back up to the funding bucket. As you can see down there, Viewpoint, Manly Connector, the one-third, third cent, you can see that eleven-hundred feet, but keep in mind, with the significant expenditure for the last project, we're doing the design now, and we're anticipating that we'll have the collection of funding this year to do this one-point-eight million dollar project, because we generate about two million dollars a year. So, at this point, we're looking to move forward with Davin Associates to complete the design in between, so that in the spring, we'll have enough money by the time we get done, by the end of the budget year, to actually pay the contractor that did the work, which is always good for them. So, always like to point out, this is what, many sections is still a two-lane road, works pretty well now for the mobility of the, of the traffic, but as we continue to grow, there'll be trigger points to where we need to take it out to the ultimate section. Always like to point out, the ultimate vision, when we widen the four lanes, ultimately, it's, I always call it the twin of Glassford Hill Road, it will have, you know, a tree median, but right now, all you see is a two-lane road. So, as I talk about, we build for connectivity, and, and it's all we need to spend at this point, to have good mobility for traffic. If we continue to grow, then that capacity element goes in. Always like to point out too, with, you know, the future park plan in this corridor and trees, there would be a separated multi-use path. This is really a neat transportation corridor that'll accommodate not only cars, but the vision of actually going from Boddy Edwards Park to the proposed Alwefria Park that's but the vision of actually going from Boden Rivers Park to the proposed Alwefria Park that's in our general plan, we talked about earlier this evening. So, our transportation element always works in with mobility for parks and people doing whatever they do other than vehicles. This road will move lots of traffic, but ultimately can move non-vehicular traffic in that adjacent multi-use path, which is part of the connectivity that we like to point out. So, always like to point this out, we'll continue to build on this particular corridor as there's a need to stay ahead of the particular growth pattern and its revenue generates. This is the exhibit we like to show, in that the adjacent channel we talked about has already been improved, and this is one last little 1,100 feet. Council may recall, we did the spouse viewpoint intersection here two years ago and opened that up, and we had this little phantom piece that we thought it'd be a good little section to improve to the ultimate configuration, as you can see, the four lane in the middle and have the median in the middle. And one of our goals as staff is to come back to Council, hopefully, you know, propose that we can put some trees in those medians. It's always a game of money, the current project we've gotten done with on Viewpoint near Roundup, you can see those medians, well, the weeds grew like trees, but we keep those down. But we do have water to the medians, but once again, we'll probably make a recommendation this next budget year to add some trees if we have funding. And typically, roadway contractors don't plant trees well, so we like to separate those and get a good plan, get the construction done. But there's a good example of this little section that we thought it'd be good with the funding to build out this little section.
Council, leave anything else for Mr. Davis?
So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve amendment to town engineer agreements with Davin Associates in amount not to exceed $158,150 for design services for Viewpoint Drive spoused to Manly by electronic vote.
I second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Item 10, comments from the public, consideration and discussion of general unscheduled comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance. Any such remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any member thereof. Such remarks shall be limited to three minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. At the conclusion of the unscheduled comments, individual members of the council may respond to the item addressed at the discretion of the mayor, or they may ask the town manager to review the matter or ask that the matter be placed on a future agenda. Clerk?
This time, I would like to call Citizen Michael, there was no last name even here.
Vice Mayor, you mentioned, he left.
Yolanda Popov.
Welcome, ma'am.
I'm new to this city, about a year now, and I attended my first council meeting last time, so this is only my second one. And I was curious, I can see now with all that you've presented in this one meeting that you would restrict, you know, public comment to certain time limit, which makes sense, but I was wondering if you've ever considered maybe a five-minute time limit for people to speak? It seems like three minutes is really, by the time you even get up here, it's, you know, one of your minutes is gone. Is that something arbitrary that you just came up with, is that in your, in our bylaws, or how is that?
Ma'am, usually this time is just, we don't answer questions, it's kind of your opportunity to speak, but if you left your number with the clerk, I could certainly reach out to you tomorrow and have more of a one-on-one conversation about how this whole came about with three minutes, five minutes type of thing.
Okay.
If that helps.
That sounds good. Thank you.
Just make sure she has your number. Thank you, ma'am.
Raylene Gosling.
Welcome, ma'am.
We will have our freedoms restored, this council has had an opportunity to repent of wickedness. You will be held accountable for stopping information that could have saved lives. It is a crime punishable by fines and prison. I do not acquiesce to the tyrants of the Prescott Valley government. Let me remind you, you serve the public, the people pay your salaries and stipends, the payer is the boss of the payee. The people are told not to address those on their thrones, come up to the podium and your three minutes starts. That is the conduct of a tyrant. The mayor works, receives $525 an hour for attending these meetings. He is usurping, stopping the people's freedom of speech. The city government is in complete deputism, we should speak as long as we want. One, I propose to use taxpayer money to demo your thrones and build desks to the level of the people. Two, open all your financial and business records to the people, including your financial disclosure statements. You can redact your addresses and phone numbers, everything else the people want to look at. Three, I instruct the Prescott Valley Public Servants bring forth the municipal corporation papers of the city and of the magistrate court. Fauxier requests are being brought forth with. Four, unreserved ordinance numbers eight and 178 referenced corporate powers. Unreserved economic vitality codes 3-05. The way public servants spend our money should not be kept secret, we have the right to see how you spend your money. I want to see the plans of the property annex by the Chino Airport. Do you plan to expand that airport? I did not move to Prescott Valley to have jumbo jets flying over my house. We are endowed by our Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among those are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. That to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their powers from the consent of the governed. That whenever any form of government becomes destructive to these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it and to institute new government, laying its foundation on such principles and organizing its powers in such form as to them shall seem most likely to affect their safety and happinesses. You're not my enemies, the demons that control you are, there are only two kingdoms. The city government is oppressive and God will execute judgment. Psalm 103:6, the Lord executes righteousness and justice for all who are oppressed. We will win, there are things going on behind the scenes you know not of. It will be a hot summer into the fall, what side government will this fall on?
Wrap it up a little bit.
Time is running out.
Thank you, ma'am.
Joanna Gira.
Welcome, ma'am.
So, I'm going to bring Jesus into this meeting, since you're all evangelicals. Job 5:10, he gives rain on the earth and sends waters on the fields. Scripture says that God gives rain and waters crops. Isaiah 26:9, for when thy judgments are on the earth, the inhabitants of the world will learn righteousness. Drought is a judgment from God, drought brings famine. Seven years of famine was one of David's judgments from God for taking a census of men. David did not choose a punishment, but fell on his face to God for mercy. Seventy thousand men of the tribe of Dan died, then God repented of his evil and put away his judgments. We can mitigate droughts and stop God's judgments by falling on our faces to God and repent. If God brings drought, you cannot stop it, you should grow grain. Here's an idea, let's do what the Bible tells us to do. Go grow grain on our city properties and store up grain as Joseph did. We are running out of time, plant wheat or grains on city properties and store up the grains for a famine. Job 32:21, 22, let not, let me not, I pray you, except any man's person, neither let me give flattering titles unto man. For I know not to give flattering titles, in doing so, my maker would soon take me away. I'm not anti-government or an anarchist, I want less government, I want my rights back, and I want government educated on our rights. Mike Pompeo tweeted yesterday, the First Amendment is our most precious amendment, that's freedom of speech, and I will not stop fighting to protect it, that's him, not me. The city government usurps our freedom of speech rights. If we were allowed to speak freely, all would know there was no pandemic, masks are not affected if against viruses, social distancing seems as a joke, the PCR test is bunk, CDC test, COVID test overinflated, only 6% died of COVID, all other deaths are presumed without testing, that's on the CDC website. We have a cure, HCQI, vermectin, Z-Pak, and zinc, so 99.9% of those who died could have been healed. Thousands of expert doctors have cried out against the shots and have been silenced by the government, mainstream media, and social media. Doctors have said the shots for COVID, if you survive the first two jabs, have a two-year life expectancy. This is what they think, here's what I think, if you follow Christ and took the jab, it's God's mercy to take you home before tribulation because you cannot discern the times we're living in. And you would have taken the mark of the beast, which equals eternal damnation. Why does the CDC require report deaths of COVID but not require reporting the deaths of those taking the shots? Or 1,000, hundreds of thousands of reactions that are ruining lives? Because they are evil and corrupt, they're really psychopaths. The man Moses was very meek above all men, which were upon the face of the earth. Why didn't God call Moses the weakest man on earth? Because he left his life of comfort, a judgment cover, government. He saw the cruelty to Hebrew slaves, and he wanted to set men free. He left well to go against evil, corrupt government. Hmm, sounds like somebody I know. The meek shall inherit the earth, God through Moses fought against the Egyptian government because of the slavery and the bond- vicious people, that sounds familiar to me.
I'm going to need you to wrap it up a little bit, ma'am.
Meekness includes fighting corrupt government, that is God's work.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Clerk, anyone else? Can I get a motion for number 11?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Clerk, call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Thanks for coming out, everyone, go home, watch the suns.